Everyone, I'll ask that you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Tamer, would you call the roll, please?
Palmski, here. Jensen?
Here.
Toledo, absent. Cahill?
Here.
Here. Toledo is here.
Oh, Toledo, I'm sorry. I forgot about people calling in. Okay. Toledo, here. Cahill?
Here.
Udara?
Here.
Park, absent. Hanquist? Absent. Bastido?
Here.
Mulliner?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Veremis?
Here.
Deuter?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
Twelve present, two absent. We have a quorum. Thank you. Are there any announcements before we start our meeting? All right. We did not put out a sheet for public comment, but we will take public comments. So if there's anyone who wants to make public comment, if you'll raise your hand, I'll recognize you.
Point of order. Are we following the executive orders and having this as a remote participation meeting? And do we need to read something about that?
Could you read this portion?
Thank you. That's right. Alderman Toledo is on the—thank you, Alderman Palmski. Let me put this in the record. The governor of the state of Illinois has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to the COVID-19 outbreak in all of the city of Elmhurst is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the mayor of the city of Elmhurst has determined that an in-person meeting for the September 13, 2021 Committee of the Whole may not be practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All of the aldermen of the city council participating in the September 13 Committee of the Whole meeting, wherever their physical location, shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony during the meeting. Alderman Toledo, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right. And when you speak, please speak up a little bit. We can hear you. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Palmski. Back to public comment. Mr. Daniel, if you approach the podium there, and you'll have three minutes, if you would just state your name. Address is optional.
Good evening, everyone. Mark Daniel, D.A.N.I.E.L. I live at 125 West Harbor Terrace, a block north of St. Charles, a block west of York. I'm also an attorney that represents Elmhurst Neighbors United and some residents in the Eggleston and Spring area by a pending project. I'm here because there's a bit of a taint on a lot that's going on here. And I've known Jim Grabowski for quite a while. I've known many of you for quite a while. The timing of this really couldn't be worse. You got some contested projects, one of which I'm involved in. And I hope that you will respect the process and not discuss this project tonight, the one I'm involved in, and discuss others tonight in the context of what's going on with the presentation. I've given dozens of statewide presentations on the subject, a few national, and it's entirely possible to do it without considering a project. The only thing I want to state about the project that I'm involved in is that I've heard—and this is literally sitting at Riley's watching football on a Saturday afternoon—I've heard some of the folks in the council are scared of a lawsuit if it denies the application in the case I'm involved in. Please do not be scared. If you deny the project, you will do it for the right reasons, and they will stand up in court. In my view, it's far better to deny the project rather than to put your neighbors and residents and voters and some of the businesses on Spring Road to the test of filing their own lawsuit. I want to thank you for your time, for your dedication. You have a split vote coming before you on this one, and we will see you on the subject in about a week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Anyone else want to give public comment? All right, there being no one else, I will close public comment. We will move to the business before the commuting meeting, which is an overview of zoning law. I will tell the council, this is much like our sober house. This is general education about zoning law. The topic—there are no other topics. There are no zoning cases before the council this evening, and any discussion regarding pending projects would be improper because it's not an agenda item. So I'm going to have the speaker introduced. There will certainly be an opportunity to ask questions, but I caution you, your questions should not involve or relate to any pending project. With that, I will ask City Manager Grabowski, are you going to introduce our presenter?
Yes. So this evening, we have Michael Blue. He is with the Illinois APA, American Planning Association, and this is a presentation that he typically would give to zoning and planning commissions throughout the state for education. And so it is a basic opportunity to learn about Illinois zoning law, comprehensive plans, and such. And so, Mr. Blue, the microphone is yours.
Hello. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blue. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Can everybody hear me? I never know if I'm shouting with the mask on. You think I'd be used to it.
You can take your mask off for the presentation if you so choose.
That'll help all of us. Thank you. I thank you for the chance to be with you tonight. Again, as the manager said, I'm the chair of the Planning Official Development Committee for the Illinois Chapter of the American Planning Association. I'm also a planning consultant. I work for Tesco Associates. But I'm here tonight as a member of the Illinois Planning Association. As was pointed out, we do this training often. We've done this about 125 different times, or a version of this, twice with your own plan commission. So thank you. You're some of our better customers. And the idea is to just share a discussion and share some insights into the essentials of planning and zoning. The only thing I would just refine the comments that were made is, we're not going to talk so much about planning law. We're going to talk about planning and zoning as the practice, as municipalities do. I'm not an attorney. So nothing comes out of my mouth is legal advice. I would echo the fact that we shouldn't be talking about a particular case, but what we're here to do is to just hear a little bit about the fundamentals of planning and zoning. Not everybody gets to do this. If you were not a commissioner, a planning commissioner, zoning commissioner, before you were a member of the council, you might not have met some of this stuff. I know some of you are newer than others. So the idea is to give you a little bit of a sense of what goes on in the planning and zoning side of all your multiple responsibilities. And for those of you that have been on the council for a while, I would tell you that when we have done this session, I always ask people, the plan commissioners, how long have they been doing this for? The record is 43 years in Schaumburg. And everybody gets something out of it, because if nothing else, it's a refresher. So with that, I'd like to dive in and share what we're about. Again, as we said, I'm with the Illinois Chapter of the American Planning Association as a volunteer. Our partner in doing these sessions is the Chattock Institute of DePaul University. In terms of what we'll talk about, we'll talk about some of the basics, the tools of the trade. We'll talk about roles in the process. There are a lot of different people that are involved in this process. We'll talk a little bit about holding meetings. And then, to the extent we have time, there's some fine points of things that you know well as council members that relate to ex parte communication and some of those other things. So if we have time, we can get into that. So if there's no questions, I'll just dive in. And if there's questions, we can discuss those at the end. So tools of the trade, comprehensive plans, zoning ordinances, subdivision ordinances, these are kind of the fundamentals. They work together. They are not the same. They are very different. And again, for folks who haven't been doing this for a long time, it's sometimes hard to tell the difference. So let's dive in and start with the comprehensive plan. I would tell you, by the way, I'm not a guy who reads all the slides back to you. I have some of my favorite comments on each of these. Like I said, we've done 100-something of these. If you see something on a slide that I don't touch on and you're curious about, let's talk about that later. But a comprehensive plan is an effort that communities go through to set a vision for the future. It's very much about deciding what are the priorities of our community, what do we want to be. I know that there is a long history of planning here in Elmhurst. And the idea of looking forward is very important. It helps those discussions that you have later, whether they're related to budget or specific questions about development. So that's the purpose of the comprehensive plan. It's a policy document. It's a vision of the future. There are a number of policy documents that communities prepare. One of the themes that I carry through these kinds of presentations is there is no right answer. There is no absolute. There is no right way and wrong way to go about setting policy. A lot of people think there is, but there's really not. There's a best way. There's a way that's best for Elmhurst. And so communities do it with all these kinds of different plans and all these different topics. Why would you do one of these plans? Well, you would do it if it was a value or something of importance to the city. Part of a comprehensive plan map—or part of a comprehensive plan—is the land use map. This is the bottom half of yours. If you had a long town, I could have fit the whole thing on the graphic, but you have a up-and-down town, so I apologize. I couldn't. But these are policies that relate to physical aspects of land use. What are residential areas? What are commercial areas? What are industrial areas? These are part of the decisions that get made when you do a comprehensive plan. What are the topics that are typically in a comprehensive plan? Again, this will get redundant, but there's no right answer, right? The policies, the directives, the discussions that are important for Elmhurst are what go into your comprehensive plan. But these are some of the things that are typically in comprehensive plan: land use, economic development, you know, environment, sustainability are kind of newer to the table. When I started doing plans 30-plus years ago, we didn't talk so much about sustainability, and quite appropriately, we do now. There is a process to doing any of these plans. In college, they taught it to us as the rational planning method, which I always thought was sort of amusing. It sort of applies. There's an irrational planning method. But the point is that there are steps to be taken. They are consistent, whether or not it is a citywide comprehensive plan, whether or not it's a plan for a corridor or a business district or the downtown. And it's essentially about understanding where are you now, gathering information, evaluating that information, looking to the entire community to develop a vision for that district or the community itself, and then to test some scenarios, right? Again, there's no right answer. There's no one absolute "gotta do this." So planning is about testing. What if we make it X? What if we make it Y? What if we develop this way? What if the buildings are this tall? These are all the questions that come up as a plan. They're not about any particular development. They're about a particular part of town or the city as a whole. The planning process is a public process, right? It's very much about the community being involved. It's about educating and informing the public about what the city is doing, but very much about hearing what the community feels is important. What are their priorities? What are their values? And then translating that into policies and programs for land use, capital improvements, development review, what—the things that you do. The plan should help you have a good sense of where the community is coming from in terms of the actions that get taken over a whole range of things. Plan implementation is always a big discussion point. I hear often, "Well, gee, you know, we did the plan, and then it just sat on the shelf." Well, that happens a lot. But planning documents can be living documents. They should be living documents. We talk when we do these presentations about using them on an annual basis, whether or not it's just taking it out and making sure it's still relevant to the things that are going on in the city, whether or not it becomes a tool at budget time to set priorities and decide how to spend money. Comprehensive plans are a great tool for securing grant funds from various government agencies, because somebody's providing a grant—if the state or the federal government is providing a grant—they want to know that the money is being spent in some sensible context. And a plan is a way of doing that. So it's got a lot of different layers at which it works for the community, and that's how it gets implemented ultimately. Part of what the comprehensive plan helps advise or provide insight to is about regulating development. And regulating development is primarily what happens through your zoning ordinance. It's a function of the police power. It's an authority that comes from the state. You may have heard—if you've read the zoning ordinance, or read as many of them as I've had the pleasure of doing—talking about health, safety, welfare, the community. A lot of times, I think we find that zoning is about balancing community character and economic development or other goals. The important part about zoning is that it's consistent and that there's a due process element to it. That's why you have public comment and all those sorts of aspects to it. And again, there's no right answer. And we'll go a little bit further into zoning. The most important part of zoning is that—well, an important part of zoning—is that it creates predictability, right? So that there's an understanding of what can happen. So your house is zoned residential, and the property next to you is also zoned single-family residential. So you know that that's what's going to happen there. And there's the predictability of knowing that your neighbor can build a fence, but it can only be four or five or six feet tall. It can't be 12 feet tall, for instance, right? So that degree of predictability is important. Part of the reason that predictability is important is that, you know, people are living someplace, and they have an expectation. The zoning ordinance is a way to help preserve that expectation. And if there's going to be a change or an amendment—we'll talk about those in a second—there's a process to do it, right? All this happens in this room. All this happens in public. Communities are broken out into zoning districts to separate things that are different. This is the other half of town. I showed the southern half, but I wanted to give some attention to the northern half as well. But kind of the fundamental element of a zoning ordinance is its zoning map and the zoning districts that it establishes. And each of these districts has got a set of uses that are appropriate for the area. It's got what we call bulk standards. It's a term of art you may have heard, but a bulk standard is the height of a building, how far the building is from the property line, its setback, and so on. And so these are the rules that are part of the zoning ordinance. Again, there's no right answer. It's asked a lot, what's the right number of residential zoning districts to have, or what's the right number of business districts to have? There is no right answer. Although, I did have a planning colleague out in Maine, actually, who had 46 single-family residential districts because they thought they had a lot of variety. That's too many. I feel safe saying that's too many. But the zoning map is based on the—in part, on the policies of the plan, in part, on the historic development patterns of the community, and in part, on the policy direction of the city. So this is kind of the breakdown of what's in a zoning ordinance. So the first use—the first type of category—is a permitted use. So it's the sort of use that you don't need a hearing for. You don't have to come before planning or zoning or the city council. If you're in a single-family district and you're building a single-family home or adding on to your single-family home, and you meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, you just come to City Hall, and you get your building permit. That's a permitted use. Variations are things that are heard through a zoning appeal board. And I apologize, I don't remember what everybody's names are in terms of the board, but the process of zoning appeals relates to variations. The idea is that there is something unique about a property that prevents the property owner from using the property normally. I used to work in Highland Park. We had a lot of pie-shaped lots or lots with a lot of topography on them, and they were very—some of those were very difficult to meet the standards of the zoning ordinance as they relate to setback. So that's a great example of where variations come into play. Conditional uses, which are the ones that go through a hearing process and ultimately come before you for approval, are those that, you know, in and of themselves may be appropriate, but they may have potential adverse impacts. So it's worth taking a closer look. Some of the classic types of conditional uses that we see in a lot of communities are, for instance, gas stations. There's a lot of coming and going, and sometimes it's appropriate to have a right-in, right-out driveway, that sort of thing. And this can be a lot of different things. I've been in towns where pet stores were conditional uses, or veterinary clinics, you know, generally kind of benign, but, you know, dogs make noise. And if you have a veterinary clinic, you might want to ask, well, is there going to be— is there going to be boarding? Because we don't want the dogs barking and disturbing the neighbors. Or if there's a drive-through, which is also often a conditional use, want to make sure that the ordering box is not too loud for the neighbors or too bright. Again, these are things that, in and of themselves, maybe not bad, but merit a closer look. And a planned unit development is a higher level of review. It's a process by which there's a little bit of negotiation that goes on to try and make a better development by letting go of some—not letting go, but providing relief in relation to some of these specific standards that I've been talking about. I always do this to myself. I always talk through the slides, and then they come up. One of the key factors about variation is that there's a hardship related to the owner. It's as distinguished from a convenience. Well, gee, you know, I know the zoning ordinance says the house can be 35 feet tall, but, you know, we really kind of wanted 40. Is that okay? Variations relate to some unique hardship. Like I had said, odd-shaped lots or that sort of thing. Again, conditional uses. The idea of the conditions, just to build on what I said before, is to mitigate some of those adverse impacts. And not to be redundant, but like I said before, if there's a drive-through, you might want to regulate the hours of operation. You might want to regulate how bright the order board is or how loud the order box is. Zoning ordinances can be changed. There are zoning amendments, right? So just because it was written in 19-whatever doesn't mean it has to stay the same. Zoning ordinances don't get updated often enough, I would tell you. I know that you're updating yours right now. But I've updated zoning ordinances where fallout shelters were permitted accessory uses in residential districts. That's a sign that the ordinance has not been updated in a while. So there's a couple ways that this can happen. One is a text amendment, which is to change the language of the code. What's significant to remember about that is when you change the text of the ordinance, you change it for all relevant properties. So if you make a change to a B1 business district, for instance, it doesn't apply just to any given property. It applies to all of them. That's probably the most important takeaway related to a text amendment. Map amendments are another way to change the code, is when you change the zoning on a particular property, right? For both of these, there are standards to be considered by the community. And this goes into a little bit more detail in terms of what the planned unit development is. Again, the idea here is that there is a public benefit. There is some reason to grant relief to some of these standards related to bulk and so on, given the opportunity to provide a higher level of development, something that's to the betterment of the community and the folks that are going to live or work on part of that development. I hate this slide because I always put up here that it's an example, and everybody points to it and says, "Well, we don't do it that way." So I have to repeat myself. There's no right answer, right? But the thing that's important to take note of, even with this example, is that the development review process starts with an informal visit to the staff's office. As community development director, people would always walk into the office, and they would say, "What does the city want to see here?" Well, much of the answer to that is in the comprehensive plan or other policy documents or direction of the city. So there's an informal process. Then there's a technical process, which is your staff, your department heads, reviewing the proposal to make sure that it meets code, and if it doesn't, how is that going to be considered? And then you start to get to preliminary and final plan reviews, particularly this example's with a PUD. But this example here shows you that, once you get to green, you're before the city council, and you're being evaluated based on the standards and the processes in your zoning ordinance. The rules—
I just want—for the council members or those in the audience who are trying to follow along and say, "Gee, it looks a little different up there." When it got copied, it's every other page. So you just have to use your imagination every other page. But we'll get the full copy. But thank you, Mr. Blue. Continue.
I wonder if people are looking at me like I'm making this stuff up. Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate that, Mayor. Subdivision is not something, especially in a built-up community like Elmhurst, subdivision ordinances are not something that you use as frequently. I think we all too often think of subdivisions as being for the development of farm fields. And in fact, it is very much a formal process for the dividing of parcels for sale and ultimately development. The other thing that's important about subdivision ordinances that also relates to a built-up community is that the standards for public improvement are included in there. So if you're visiting friends in another town, and you think, "My word, this residential street is very wide," that's in the subdivision ordinance. That standard, that character for infrastructure is in there. There's also requirements that relate to dedication for schools and parks. And again, comes up more in developing rather than developed communities. But the subdivision ordinance, even though you're not going to use it a lot in a built-up community, over the years, it helped establish the character in the way Elmhurst looks. In terms of roles of the process, we'll talk about a few of these different actors. Somebody said something very interesting to me once about this, which is—one of the things that's interesting is not just that there's a lot of people that are involved in the development process for any type of project, but that they all come to it at a different time in the evaluation process, right? And so I always thought that was interesting, and that's something I want to highlight and encourage you to take note of as we go through, is that by the time the planning commissioner, by the time that a city council sees a development, it's spent quite a while, perhaps months. We've had it happen—it takes years sometimes—before it gets here, that it's been evolving and developing, and there's been citizen participation and involvement and feedback. And so not everybody sees all these things at the same time. In terms of roles in the process, commissions are an important part of the process. They really are the development arm of the community. They're the historic preservation arm of the community. There is—I told you you'd be tired of hearing this—there's no right answer to what you have a commission for, right? Cities and villages set up commissions for things that are priorities to them, right? And these are some of the ones that are here in Elmhurst. I mean, this speaks to what's a priority here in terms of public art and historic preservation. Not every community has got these kinds of commissions. This tells you what's a priority in a community. And again, these are volunteers, and I'm sure some of you have been members of these commissions. One of the things that is a unique treat about the state of Illinois is the number of jurisdictions that exist, all the taxing bodies. For the most part, all those folks that—all those jurisdictions that are listed on a tax bill don't really come into play with the zoning process. They may, more with the planning process. As you go through and you look to create the vision for your community—I mean, these are certainly some of the groups and organizations and jurisdictions that you'd want to have be part of that process. But again, these are folks that are working with you to help create your community, to help provide quality of life for your residents. And while they may or may not be directly part of the development process, like I said, they're going to be part of the planning process, and they're very much your partners in serving your residents. What are your responsibilities? You're certainly an important part of the process. You know, one of the things that—when we do this training with plan commissions, that we like to make sure that the commissions take note of is that you have a lot of non-land use responsibilities, right? So there are a lot of responsibilities that relate to budget and personnel and whatnot that become part of the decisions that you make. So that kind of becomes part of your role in this, is to balance all of those factors. In terms of these land use decisions, you have the final authority for what we talked about in terms of the conditional about in terms of the, the conditional uses and text amendments, and I think some variations, I understand. Part of what you do is you give policy direction to the commissions, whether you do it at budget time or workshops or whatnot. But the commissions are, at some point, looking to the city council for their direction, their focus. A lot of them will have their own ideas and their own direction and will come to you and say, hey, you know what? We ought to be looking at this or doing that. That kind of back and forth is a, is a big part of the process. The, the role of staff, there's a long list on here. Maybe I'm a little biased about the importance of staff, so there's a lot thing, there's a lot of things listed here. But, but the staff very much becomes what I like to describe as the interpreter. So that when residents call, when commissioners call, when you call and you say, well, wait a minute, this thing is on the corner, and I thought it could only be 30 feet setback, and it may be it's four, I don't, right? So the staff is there to help all of you, to help the residents interpret the code, interpret the policies in the ordinance or, or in the comprehensive plan. When I was a community director, I used to have people come and they would say, like I said, what does the city want to see here? And the insights that, that I provided were not just based on the code, but they were based on what had the city council done before, what had we seen. Never told anybody, yes, you can or no, you can't. But part of our role was to share insights into what goes on and to answer those questions. So the, the, your staff, planning, and, and everybody else really, is, is interpreting policy and direction of, of the city for those that have questions about it. There are others. Municipal attorney, the public. These are a little bit on the self-evidence side, but again, the, the attorney provides guidance on hearing procedures and, and legal issues. The public is part of the process. They listen, they learn, they share their insights, and that all becomes part of what the Planning and Zoning Commission deliberate on, and, and same with you. There's a role for the developer, too. And the, the developer is really helping the community implement the comprehensive plan. That's one of the ways you implement your comprehensive plan. If the comprehensive plan says, you know, we, we really need for there to be condos or apartments or something on the edge of downtown, and that's in the plan, and that's in the zoning ordinance, and the developer comes in, they're, they're actually helping to do that. Now, they have to conform to the requirements of the code and go through the process and whatnot, but they are very much a part of this overall process of, of implementing the plan and, and building the community. A few things about holding meetings and responsibilities and testimony and findings of fact and so on. Meeting responsibilities, not just for commissioners and council members, but staff does this, everybody does this. And I guess the, the overall notion here is, is about being prepared, understanding what your plan and your zoning ordinance say about a particular property. I'm talking specifically about zoning issues here now. Understand what it says about the property. Review the information that you get. Visit the site. You know, a lot of times, and I was on a plan commission for a little while, and, you know, they always just say, go visit the site. And I'm like, I drive past it all the time. And what I learned was, you know, there's a difference between driving past it all the time and looking at it specifically with fresh eyes for the matter that's before you. So this idea of visit the site is one up here that, you know, kind of goes by quickly, but, but we consider one of the more important, more important ones. Taking testimony. So every community has got a process. You won't be surprised to hear me say, there's no right answer. There are legally things that you have to do, there are things that you are legally required to do. But in terms of how you take testimony, how you do the process, who does the presentation, what order the presentations happen in, those are, are a matter of, of local practice. But the idea is, in general, to follow these kinds of things about having a fair hearing that everybody can be part of, assuring that people have been heard, weighing testimony, consider the testimony when you vote, and then vote based on the zoning standards. And we'll, we'll get to that in, in just a bit. These zoning standards are basically described as, as findings of fact. They become the basis for the consistency of your decision, right? And so in part, they keep you consistent with your plan, they outline the, the evidence and the information that, that you're hearing. And in a lot of times, commissions in particular, more than councils, will even refer to the standards when they're, when they're voting. And these are the legal standards. These come from, again, I'm not the attorney in the room, but in Illinois, findings of fact are very much driven by this court case from 1957. In fact, we call them LaSalle factors. So if you've heard the term LaSalle factors or something being considered in, in light of LaSalle factors, this is why is, is this case, LaSalle Bank versus Cook County. Let's, let's go on and dive a little bit into the LaSalle factors. These are your standards here in, in Elmhurst. They're in your zoning ordinance. And I just picked the ones for, for conditional use. There's, they're also there for variation. And didn't want to spend a ton of time on these, but I, I do want to make note of the fact of their significance. And, and I want to tell you my shorthand for them. You know, I generally consider, we can kind of turn through them, they're in your code, you can read them at your leisure. But the, these are the standards by which the commission considers and ultimately the, the city decides. I, I generally think of these in terms of do no harm, right? Don't, don't, development and conditional use should not adversely impact neighbors. There can be inconveniences created, there can be changes created. That's how communities develop. But part of what you're asked to do is to, is to find that balance point. And similarly, the idea is to be, maintain consistency with the community's trend of development, right? So, you know, the, the type of development that happens on New York is going to be different than what's in a residential area. And the, part of the consideration of a conditional use is that you're maintaining that trend of development. You're creating that consistency. Remember, I said predictability a while ago? You're preserving that predictability. Again, things change. Things change all the time. There are going to be differences. There are going to be things that people didn't expect. There are going to be things you didn't expect. But these findings of fact become the questions that you consider as you find the balance of, of making the determination of whether or not to approve a proposal before you. So these are the last few items on here, Mr. Mayor. We kind of figured if we had time and then we could go through these quickly, but I'll, I'll defer to you all if, if you'd like to see a little bit more of this. If not, I'm glad to answer questions on the part of the presentation we've done.
I just want to mention those, and then I'm going to ask, before we take questions, we're going to ask Chairman Rose from our zoning and planning commission to make a few comments, and then we'll take questions from you and/or her at the end, if that's okay.
Excellent. So the idea of, of ex parte communication is discussion that is held outside of a public hearing or outside of, of a public meeting. And, and again, the, the idea in short is part of due process and is part of a fair and, and open hearing. So the idea of, of ex parte communication can be challenging, especially, like I said, go visit the site. Well, if you go visit the site and the owner comes out and the owner says, hey, Alderman, let me, let me tell you why this is a good idea. That's ex parte communication. It happens outside of the course of the meeting. And it's, it's, it's really something that we, we discourage people to do. A lot of towns will have their own specific rules on how to deal with this, but essentially what we encourage people to do is to say, look, you know what? I, I want to thank you for your interest or your participation. Some people get stopped in grocery store. But why don't you come to the public hearing? Planning and zoning commission meeting is, is coming up. And people will say, well, I don't want to do that. I don't have time to go to all those meetings. You say, you know what? Send an email to staff. Staff will make sure it becomes part of the record. But, but having the conversation outside of the meeting is, is really not the, the best practice and really something that, like I said, every town has got its own approach to dealing with, but, but is generally discouraged. Conflict of interest is another presentation that, again, I'm not the attorney, but a conflict of interest is a financial interest. And it's, it's sort of interesting just to take note of the fact that if your, if your church or an organization that you're part of comes before the city for a conditional use or something, that, that's not really a conflict of interest. A conflict of interest is, is a financial interest, right? So if, if your brother-in-law comes before the, the city and wants to open a pizza parlor, that's not really a conflict of interest. If you own the building that the pizza place is going to be in, that's a conflict of interest. If you're selling the equipment to your brother-in-law, that's a conflict of interest. But a financial conflict of interest is, is really the question here. There's also the question of an appearance of impropriety, and this is really more where this comes up. And I, I would mention here, as I should have mentioned with a couple of things, if you have a question about any of this, do not hesitate to call the staff. Do not hesitate to call the manager or whatever staff member you're dealing with. This is not for you to sit and ponder late at night worrying about what should I do? And oh, my goodness, no. These are the sorts of things that staff is here to help you with. If the city attorney needs to be involved, that's an easy phone call, right? So this is not something that anybody needs to be expert in or have their, a complete understanding of. The answer to, to this and so many other things is, is to call staff with questions. The, the options when there is a conflict of interest are to recuse oneself, is to say, look, I'm selling my brother-in-law the building. I shouldn't be part of this deliberation, and leave the room and not be part of the discussion. A lot of times, the answer is to disclose, right? Yes, I'm a member of this church and, but I, I have no financial interest in the church, and I'm not on the board, I'm not a representative of it in any way, and I feel that I can make a fair and open deliberation on this matter. There was, there was an item that we had when I was in Highland Park where I think, I think two-thirds of the, the city council were all members of the congregation that had come before the, the city for, for special use. And if they'd all recused themselves, we'd have been able to make a decision. So that sort of thing. Disclosing is, is an important part of this process, though. Open Meetings Act is sort of the easy one for me because you're all required by state law to take the open meetings training through the, through the state. So you've, you've probably been through this. But we, we put this in here is it, it sort of completes the, the notion of, of the fair and consistent process that, that zoning is incurred, that zoning requires us all to follow. So on behalf of the Illinois EPA and the Chaddick Institute, it's a pleasure to be with you here tonight. I'll defer to the chair. Where, oh, there she is.
Mr. Blue, just before you go, I want to, you said something that I think you used the wrong word. I just want to ask you. So you said that if you were in the grocery store and someone says, Alderman, I want to talk to you about this. I think you meant commissioner, because the commissioners are the ones that take the evidence.
Thank you.
And the aldermen are more legislators in nature, so, but that is why, for those who might be watching if this is taped, and you call one of our commissioners on a pending case, they will not speak to you because they shouldn't.
Thank you for that clarification.
But thank you. So hang around, we may have some questions. Chairman Rose, would you like to take the podium, please?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I have a little, a very brief PowerPoint.
You know, before you go on, for the aldermen who don't know you, Chairman Rose was on the council for 16 years, 16 wonderful years, 20? We're negotiating on 20.
Twenty.
And chaired the Development, Planning and Zoning Committee for a number of those years and has been chair of the commission for now a number of years. So steeped in knowledge about the history of our zoning process and the process itself. But thank you.
Thank you. I, I never thought I would be a zoning geek, but I am. So I really appreciate the ability to speak with you this evening. And what I wanted to do, just a very simple agenda here, is to introduce you to the people who are on this commission. These are your neighbors. These are members of this community, and they give an incredible amount. As Mayor Levin said, I chaired the Development, Planning and Zoning Committee for 16 years. So I worked with the commission then, and then I've been on the commission since 2013 and chaired it since 2017. And I have to say that this group of people now who comprise the Zoning and Planning Commission are really some of the most dedicated, knowledgeable, sensitive, thoughtful folks in relation to zoning, and I'm privileged to work with them. So you want to do the next slide. In fact, I'm going to introduce you to some of them who are here. I'm, I'm the chair. And again, I was DPZ chair. I've been a member of the commission since 2013. I said that I'm a professor. I'm actually now a professor emeritus the last two weeks. So I am, I'm retired from the University of Wisconsin, Milwaukee. Lisa Callaway, who is not here, is a vice chair. Lisa has been a member of the Zoning and Planning Commission. She came several months before I did in 2013. She was made the vice chair in 2019 primarily because we didn't have a vice chair. And this became really problematic when Daryl Whistler, who had chaired the zoning commission for many years, was ill in the last several months. And we, we didn't have any way to figure out who's going to run the meeting. And so we changed our bylaws, and Lisa Callaway then became the vice chair. She is an attorney with Engler, Callaway, Bastian and Soraga. Susan McCoyd, who's here with us this evening, this is Commissioner Rowe over here, is our longest-serving commissioner. She deserves a medal. She has been a commission member since 1993. And if memory serves me correct, that's 28 years. Is that correct, Commissioner McCoyd? She served as a director of development at Immaculate Conception Grade School and has since retired from that and is a, really a, a critical voice on that commission. Jordan Uditsky, who is not here this evening, has been a zoning and planning commission member since 2014. He's currently an attorney with Grogan, Hess and Uditsky. He also actually ran a sign company in Elmhurst for a number of years. So when we ever considered signs, he was always, had a wealth of knowledge about that. Dave Garland, has been a zoning, planning commission member since 2016, senior vice president with McDonald's Corporation, retired, and he's taken full advantage of that to travel. He's a really an important member. Kevin Burns, who is here this evening with us, has been a member of the commission since 2017, and in his professional life is a real estate appraiser with Burns and Walsh, based in Oakbrook, I believe. Next one. Carol Snyder, who is here this evening in the back. Carol Snyder's been a zoning commission member since 2019. I think Carol was able to attend a few sessions, several before the pandemic hit. She's the principal and vice president of Push Design and has been that for 24 years, I believe, something like that. Melissa Pittman, who is not here this evening, but she has been a member of the commission since 2020. Melissa got to attend one zoning, planning commission meeting before the pandemic and then has taken over with Zoom. She was the vice president of Morningside Equities Group, who built the Hans, I keep calling it the Han Street Project. I know it's got a different name, but the Han Street Project for 16 years. And Mr. Mark Hoffman is here this evening. He is a zoning, planning commission member, our newest member, 2020. In fact, this week, I met him for the first time face-to-face. He joined the commission, we talked about it, he did Zooming, never saw him face-to-face until last Tuesday. He is assistant director of ambulatory development at Edwards Elmhurst Hospital. So as you can see, these are all folks who are very committed to this community and bring a variety of perspectives from their own professional lives, as well as kind of where they live. They're scattered around the community in all of the wards, so they have a lot of different perspectives, and that's what's really important on the commission. This is my poor attempt, and good God, I can't read it, but I'll, I'll do this, to really try to look at, I apologize, normally this would be bigger, but to look at what are the relative roles. I think Mr. Blue really covered this well, but I wanted to bring this down to the micro level to help you understand what we do, what the Development, Planning and Zoning Committee should do, and what the council does. I, I often say this to, when applicants come in, that this is a three-stage process, and by and large, it is. Our responsibility on the commission is really to review applications for planned unit developments, variations and conditional uses. So the applicant comes in and we review those in relation to the standards. They should be burned on the brains of commissioners or needlepoint them on pillows, which is, there's three criteria to be met to, for the approval of a variation and seven for a conditional use. So we look at all of those. The other major activity, that's, that's primarily when we sit as a zoning board of appeals. When we sit as a zoning and planning commission, we have another significant role. And that role is to periodically review the zoning codes and the comprehensive plans. So we are required by our own codes to do that on a periodic basis. That's kind of left for, periodic is a loose term for how often we should do that. While we While we take a vote in the zoning commission, I'm very clear to say, we are not approving. What we are doing is voting for what we intend to recommend to the Development Planning and Zoning Committee of the city council. In another slide, I'll say, and I'll elaborate on that, we are outside of the political process. So, our job is to recommend to the DPZ. DPZ committee really reviews these recommendations, and they consider it, they consider the recommendation from a policy point of view, that they put on a policy lens. Now, they, one of the things that they have is transcripts from our hearings. One of the things we instituted in 2017 was transcripts of deliberations. Up until that point, any city council member could look at a transcript of the public hearing, so you knew what went on. And this probably came from my time in DPZ, I always wanted to know, what did the commissioners think about, I was curious about that. We have instituted on complicated cases, I'll call them, and that's a judgment call, cases that generally have a lot of moving pieces, a lot of people involved in that, that we will do a transcript on the deliberations. So, any city council member, you can look, the DPZ, I know that they look very closely at those transcripts before they do any discussion of that, and, but what they do that we don't do is consider the policy implications of that, that's absolutely critical. And then they recommend action to the city council. So, we're all just recommending up until this point. And then it comes to you in the city council. You certainly have the ability to read all those transcripts, I suspect that that doesn't happen very often, some of them are pretty voluminous, but that, it certainly is important for you to do that if you choose. So, at this point, city council's responsibility is really to review this as well from a policy perspective for the whole city, and take a broader view than anything else. You are, as Mr. Blue said over and over, you are the final decision-makers for this, and it's important for every applicant, when they come in, I try to set that out for them, this is what the process is. It's three stages, you'll have a chance at any stage, if you don't like what one, one decision quote has been, you've got an opportunity to, to look at this at various points of view. The city council, certainly the Development Planning and Zoning Committee, and the city council can make amendments, they, to their report, they can, we do a recommendation, it's a pretty bare-bones report, but I think the council and the DPZ committee has a little more latitude at this point, because you're looking at policy, to really consider and go more fully into that. So, I wanted to talk about just some aspects of zoning and planning commission functioning in Elmhurst. Again, I want to emphasize over and over that the ZPC stands outside of the political process. What does that mean? That means that we have to look at it, we look at it from the point of view of the standards, does the applicant meet these standards? And we use our best judgment to determine that, do, do they meet these standards? As you can see, people on this commission are active people in the community, so any one of them can come up to them and say, it's not just in the grocery store, could be at the hairdressers, where I saw Alderman Veramus one day, could be anywhere that you see them, and they want to, can we talk about that? And the answer is no, we cannot. And I have pretty full trust and confidence in all members of the commission, that that's the consistent message they give. And why, why can't we talk to you about it? Because everybody should hear it, that's the point that I've said to them. If you tell me, I hear it, and then I get to translate it to the commission about what I think you said, we're really, we are outside of that, you come and, you want, you can tell everybody that. It's no good to lobby me, to lobby anyone on the commission about anything, we're not running for any office, we are commissioners, we are an appointed body, so we are outside that political process. Gets a little sticky for some, I've had to navigate this myself as a former alderman, some of my constituents want to talk to me about it, and I've said the same, I'm in a different role, you can't talk to me about it the way that you talked to me about it before, I am in a different role. And so, that's, that is written in stone for us. Zoning and Planning Commission also sits as the zoning board of appeals, it's a very efficient way to do things, so that we, some communities do, some don't, it's, it's a pretty efficient way to do that, and it really develops a depth of knowledge, I think, about zoning issues that we sit with both of them. The other thing that's different from what you as a council or the DPZ does, is that the Zoning and Planning Commission, public hearings are legal proceedings, so everybody has to be sworn in, transcripts are kept, and we've talked about the deliberations. There's one other oddity of this that I'll, I'll put here, which is in some areas, zoning and planning commission does have final authority. If you look in the zoning code, these are things really relate specifically to size, for example, it might be, something is less than a specific percentage of a setback, or its type, like fence height in a particular case, or the area of, of that, but there's 10 different scenarios in which zoning and planning commission has final authority. So, oftentimes, at the end of a discussion, I'll turn to Eileen and say, do we have final, when, no, usually what happens, I'm not that smart, usually what happens, I'll say, is this going to, when does this go to the Development Planning and Zoning Committee? And she'll say to me, actually, we have final authority on this one, so it will not go there. So, there are some things, and you might want to look at that yourself, to see which are those things that we do have final authority on. So, that's my spiel, I wanted you to meet people from the commission, and you should feel great about the commissioners that are there, and the amount of time and effort that they put into this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Rose. And what I'd like to do now is to see if any council members, which I call aldermen, have any specific questions for either Mr. Blue or Ms. Rose. Alderman Bastido.
Thank you, guys, for taking the time to talk through that. So, I guess my question will be for Chairman Rose, sorry. You mentioned that you don't put many notes in your recommendations. Obviously, as a member of the committee, I go back and listen to all of the transcripts and all of that, but, so then, do you expect, and when you were on the committee, does the committee put more notes into their recommendation, because they're not assuming that every member of the council is going to go back and read every transcript the way that the committee does?
That was generally our practice, I don't know what Alderman Palmski's practice is on this, but they were, had more depth, primarily because they also considered policy. So, there, it's not that there was, they added more, Development Planning and Zoning Committee didn't, does not necessarily add more information, because the public record is the public record. It's done, it's closed, that's the public record. But if they are considering based on what are the policy implications of this particular recommendation, that's what you'll see in their report, is that. And I would think that the city council, it's been my experience, does the same thing, but, and they take it even broader, what are the policy implications for the full city now, and perhaps in the near future, that we want to look at. So, that's why those reports are probably a little more extensive.
So, I understand that the committee looks at the policy, they put that lens on, are they looking at the standards as well as the policy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, not just policy?
Oh, gosh, no, 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 that's the add-on, the add-on is policy. They also look at those standards and ask themselves the same questions, but they have the advantage of the transcript, they have the advantage of public input. So, when they're doing all of that, they, and they've got some distance, they've got the advantage of, you know, looking at that and making their own decisions on that as well.
Okay. And then, so you said that the ZPC is outside the political process, and I understand it's outside the election process, right? You're not elected, but there is some politics in it, right? How are you appointed, and how are you removed?
Let me be clear, it is outside the elective process. I also believe that it's outside the political process. I, I don't think I lobbied anybody for my position to get it. It is, I'm not so naive as to think, we never think about policy, so that I'm not so naive as to think it's not, it's completely separated, small p, from a political process, but as much as possible, we intend to keep it free from electoral political process.
But you're, I'm, I'm being serious when I say, how are you appointed, and how are you removed? Or are you, serve a term and you're finished?
I was appointed by Mayor Morley, and it is with advice and consent of the full, of the city council. The city council then approved that, to serve for a term of five years. At the end of five years, I could say, gee, I want to do it again. The mayor and city council could say, well, gee, thank you, but maybe we'll look for somebody else, that's certainly up to them to do. If someone is appointed to fill a term that has not expired, so for example, somebody moved out of the community, that's the most common way that, that it would happen, that person really just completes that term, is what they do.
So, every commissioner has five years, and then-
Correct.
I assume they're staggered?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
They're staggered.
Okay.
Okay?
I think that's the end of my question.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Blue, do you agree with everything that was said?
I most certainly do.
All right.
Oh, sorry, I have one more, sorry.
All right.
So, we, the discussion, no one can talk to you about it when it's in front of the commission, after it, you've already made your recommendation, would you or could you talk to people about it then, or still then? Should you not?
It's, it's my recommendation to commissioners that we not talk about it until it's fully decided by the city council.
Okay.
I think that's best practice. I suppose it's possible they could, but I think it's better practice for it to go through the full city council process, because I'm, you never know what happens at the city council. It may be decided to be remanded back to us for some reason, so, best practice is that we really not talk about it until it goes through the full city council. And to be honest with you, I think the best practice is not, how do you keep it outside the political process? You tell people to come to the commission, we'll talk about it there, and you don't talk about it at the grocery store. You don't, you don't talk about it at, at the hairdressers.
Got it, thank you.
Alderman Palmski.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for our presenters. I have a question, there is a slide about taking testimony, and I'm wondering if, for either one of you, we could talk through examples of what is testimony and what is not testimony? Because there's a lot for members of the council, members of the committee to consider. Some things fall within the category of testimony, and some input does not. So, I'm curious if we could, if we could review some examples of those.
Well, from a practical point of view, anything someone wishes to say during public testimony is considered testimony. What, I always caution everyone who comes to the commission meeting, there's a point at the beginning of the meeting where they can talk about any zoning issue, and that if they do that, that is not a part of, of the legal record, that's not part of the testimony, and we are actually obligated to not consider it, so, but, really, the, from the commission point of view, anytime someone wants to get up, a member of the public, and make a comment about a case that is in front of us, that is considered, we consider that testimony, to be honest with you. So, we have a broad definition of that.
Follow-up.
Mr. Blue, did you want to add anything, or?
I would just add, and part of the reason that this point is up here is, is there, there are times where there will be a, a public hearing before a, a commission, and, and people raise concerns that really aren't necessarily to the point of the matter being heard. A lot of times, stormwater is, is a concern for people, and, and people raise the concern, but it may or may not be relevant. So, that's kind of the, the point here, is to take note of the fact, whether something like stormwater has to meet the requirements of the city and the county, and so on and so forth, it may not be relevant. Sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't, and that's really for the commission to, to kind of sort through as they hear it.
Alderman Palmski, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just, so I want to just really clarify that testimony is heard and recorded, captured during the commission, it is not, it is not a part of the other processes. I mean, it is not gathered new throughout the other processes.
No, that's my understanding. Testimony can also be written testimony, people can provide letters that are on board docs around that, that's also considered part of the public record at that point. But I, I guess it's the, and Mr. Blue may disagree with me on this, but I think that for local government to work, people have to have a sense that they're being heard, and it's our responsibility to sift that out and say, oh, this is relevant to the case, and this may or may not be relevant. I don't, I think that that is a burden on the public to make them make that choice. I'd rather hear everything that they have to say, and then commissioners themselves can make some choices about, does that make sense to us? I guess it's, more is probably better than, I would rather make a type-one error to include more than a type-two error to exclude more.
And I would, I would agree, and, and I would add, part of that comes out in, in the deliberation of the body, all right? So, there's not just the testimony that gets heard, the public, the applicant, whoever's at, at the meeting, but then what happens is there's deliberation, right? The public, public comment portion of the public hearing will be closed, and the commissioners will deliberate. It's essentially discussion among themselves, what do you think, what do you think, what do you think? And then that's where the commissioners are kind of sorting out the, the different aspects of the testimony, as, as the chair was saying.
Thank you.
Anything else, Alderman Palmski? No?
Thanks.
Alderman Dunn?
Spent two years on DPZ, and what, my question for either Chairman Rose or Mr. Blue, the, I know the commission looks at the case in front of them as it relates to the, the standards variation or conditional use, sometimes, and, and it's strictly, you know, almost a black-and-white decision, but sometimes, out of the commission, there are additional conditions put on the case, you know, we'd like a little more landscaping here, you know, we'd like this moved a different, a little bit differently, approached a little bit differently than was originally proposed. So, that, to me, sort of drifts a little bit into policy to some extent, so I'm just wondering how that fits into the process.
Well, I've learned through painful experiences that the applicant is under no obligation to agree to any of those, you know, that, really, the commission should look at the case as it comes, and we can say, gee, we would like this, we would like that, but really, the applicant is not under any, they don't have to agree to that if they don't wish to agree to that. So, I think sometimes, you know, we think, oh, yeah, this would be great if it was this, if it was that, if it was that, and if someone agrees to that, that's fine, but if they don't agree to that, I think we're wasting our time in doing that, and I, I think we should be very cautious about doing that type of negotiation. I think that really belongs at the level of DPZ, of the committee, to do that level. We can make a recommendation that says, gee, that would be nice, but that's not- We can make a recommendation that says, gee, that would be nice, but that's not, I think that's less, the less we do of that, the better we will function, to be honest with you.
Mr. Blue?
I would agree, but I would, I would add, you know, there's, there's not a bright line between policy and regulation. They're different, and the zoning ordinance certainly treats them differently, and they each have their place, but they're not absolutely mutually exclusive, right? So the height of a building in a downtown district or in a residential district that is set by zoning, it's a regulation, well, that comes from policy. There's a deliberation during the comprehensive plan, we should have taller buildings in the downtown, but not so much in other parts of the community. So those policies find their way into the regulations, so there is, there is a certain amount of intermingling between them. But in terms of making the final determinations, when the commission recommends, and then the committee recommends, those policies find their way into the zoning standards, which become finally the determination that you're deciding on.
Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Rose, first off, thank you for your service, and the commissioners and the work that you do. It's
You're welcome.
Quite a commitment, and it's very appreciated. So each item that comes, you know, before the commission, you know, sure, you have standards that you're looking at, et cetera, but they're very unique, right? There's some, you know, there, it may take 20 minutes to bake, it may take 40 minutes to bake, to, just to equate it to baking, but, so when an item's before the commission, you know, what is some of the criteria or methodology that you use to know that, all right, we've exhausted the process, and it should come for a vote?
Some of the other commissioners might want to weigh in on that. Usually, I just keep going around and around and asking people, you know, are you ready to vote? And if you're not ready, are there other things you want to talk about? You want to keep really working on this particular thing, or trying to talk about that? I'll, I'll keep it open as long as possible. I probably err on the side of more discussion rather than less, just because I think it's, many things become clear the more you talk about them. So, and we spend a lot of effort talking about, oftentimes, that first criteria in variations, that it's, there's something unique about the situation, the property, and attempting to define that. So, so we really rely on commissioners to use their best judgment, to think about what that means. And then the other two standards of a variation oftentimes flow from that first one, but not always. So, you know, the second one is that it wouldn't change the character of the neighborhood. Some cases, that's a serious, that's, that's much more salient than the uniqueness. And then the last one has to do with, the petitioner could not get a reasonable return or reasonable enjoyment, those are two different things, from their property without the variation. So it's, there's some very lively discussion, and people are not reticent to talk about these things. So I, and this is just purely my style as chairing, I'm willing to let people talk and talk until I get a clear sense that everyone is ready to vote, and then we'll vote.
Thank you, that makes sense.
I would just add, these standards are not yes-or-no questions. This isn't math. It's not quite philosophy, but it's not math. So I completely endorse the approach that the chair is talking about, is sometimes you need to talk about these things for quite a while, and then there can be, you know, new information that comes, and the conversation perhaps starts again. So there's no, there's, these are not yes-or-no questions, so the approach that you're describing is spot-on.
Do I get a second turn? Thank you.
Not a third, but second, yes.
So can we talk about the conditions? Because you said that the applicant has to agree to them, they don't have to do the conditions, but if conditions come out of the city council, do they have to do them if they want to do the project? Or even then?
That's up to the city council to determine.
Okay, so say at the ZPC, you put three conditions on, the DPZ recommends the same three conditions, and then the city council approves the plan with those three conditions. Then are they obligated?
I think the attorney is probably the best one, really, to answer that. It's my understanding that they are under no obligation, the city council can say, you have to do it, or we're going to vote. No, that's always a possibility. But they may say, I don't want to do it, but I would defer that, actually, to the city attorney to respond to.
Can you restate the question, please? I just want to make sure I understand how much you're saying.
Which is, let me say, and you tell me if I'm wrong, right or wrong about that. If the, even up to the council says, gee, there's some conditions, and we want you to agree to those, and if you don't agree to those, are, this is what we want, is the petitioner obligated to agree to those?
No.
That's what, I didn't think so.
Not agree to them, but if they want to do
That's political.
The project, they have to do, I mean, I thought we were saying you can only do this if you have these, if you meet these three conditions?
Yeah, if, if they want an approval, they'll accept whatever conditions are imposed.
Got it.
If they disagree with the conditions, they can litigate them.
Okay, after they're decided on. So is it that they're saying, before the city council votes, the applicant is saying, yes, we agree to those, or no, we don't agree to those? That happens before the vote is taken?
Again, that's up to the city council, however they want to conduct it. It could happen that way, it could happen other way. Right? So the process that you're talking about is organic, and there's no set procedure for how that, what you're talking about, the conditions, imposing conditions, there's no set procedure for it. Some people believe that it's better practice to ask for agreement, so that they know that they'll accept it if they approve it. Having said that, I've seen it done otherwise. Again, if they want the approval, they'll take it with whatever condition is imposed. If they believe that the conditions are too onerous or arbitrary and capricious, they can litigate them.
Okay. So if they do agree to the conditions before the vote, then it seems like there's an understanding among everyone. But if they don't agree to them, then the city council can put whatever conditions they want on it and approve the project, and then what happens if the applicant does whatever they want? Then the city has to take whatever steps are in their power to enforce those conditions?
If they don't comply with the ordinance, they will be prosecuted.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. Additional questions? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor, this is Alderman Toledo.
Yes, Alderman Toledo. Speak up a little bit, please.
Is this better?
Yes, thank you. Proceed.
Thank you. Just putting a finer point on Alderman Bastido's question, and to our city attorney, my understanding of zoning is, when we're talking about a conditional use, it is within the legal authority of the city council to approve a conditional use based on standards, and including conditions if that body so deems them necessary to meet the standards. And what I'm just wanting to double clarify is, if a city council approves a conditional use with conditions, the applicant can either accept those conditions, or refuse the conditions, and if they refuse the conditions, they can choose, if they so desire as an applicant, to litigate, and the only basis of that litigation would be what?
Whether or not the decision is arbitrary and capricious.
Would be what? It would be based on some interpretation of unreasonable conditions? That's the question I have to clarify. Thank you.
The standard for any litigation of zoning cases is whether or not the decision is arbitrary and capricious, such that it deprives the applicant of due process.
Does that answer your question, Alderman Toledo?
If city attorney could give a little bit more color around capriciousness and due process as it relates to the legal interpretation of those terms, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Due process refers to the reasonableness of the conduct. Due process in zoning has many different levels, it involves ability to present witnesses, present evidence, to cross-examine, to have, you know, written testimony submitted, submitted. The due process, then, under state law, is, attaches to every level of decision in the zoning process. So everybody has the ability to have a hearing, to have a decision made in a public setting, and to have an agenda with a vote. Those are fundamental. If for some reason there's a procedural issue that is not addressed by way of that, that is a basis to overturn the decision as being arbitrary and capricious. If there is a decision that is too onerous or impossible for the applicant to perform, that's another basis, that they would say, that this is too onerous, I can't do it, it's physically impossible for me to perform this. That's another basis for them to challenge it on a due process basis. I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about going any further with this discussion, to the extent that they may have other applications and some other matters that we're dealing with, and I would suggest
I would agree.
That we go away from this line of questioning at this point.
All right, well, we're going to follow the advice of our legal counsel. Do you have other questions, Alderman Toledo?
No, I do that with suspicion. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Toledo. Additional questions? Alderman Hill?
If we could go back to the ex parte slide that was up, I just want to, I would refer to it here, but I'm trying to make sure I understand it, and if this is related to the discussion in the wrong way, I'm happy to defer this, but I guess separately, I just want to understand this going forward, so when there are conditions set, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't think I can continue this questioning without getting further into a question I'm not trying to ask. I'm just confusing myself a little bit, but maybe seeing this slide will help.
All right, then the answer's no.
Good choice, Alderman Hill.
But if it, if it comes back up, let us know if you formulate it. Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just on the ex parte communication, just to clarify what you, I think, made one clarification about earlier, is that the, what the presenter was talking about applies to commissioners, but not to Alderman, correct? In terms of if the owner calls and has a question, the ex parte that the presenter was talking about does not apply to Alderman, right? That applies strictly to the commissioners? Is that correct?
Mr. Blue, it was your slide, so I'm going to let you see if you agreed or disagreed with what I said, or expand on it.
I'll defer to local practice, and you and the attorney, this is something that different communities handle differently. I've worked in communities where they ask the elected officials to not talk to folks outside. So whether or not it's legal or right or proper for Elmhurst, I'll defer to you and the city attorney.
Well, to be clear, at least on one point, is that the commissioners
Yes.
Cannot engage, because they are essentially mini-judges in a legal proceeding. So just like I'm an attorney, I can't go talk to the judge before whom a case is pending until it's over. I liken the situation to, that's sort of the judicial branch of our process, and we are the legislative branch, so you may, and I think our local practice is that Aldermen do talk to constituents, people who have an interest, and while it would be clearly improper for a commissioner to engage in the conversation, it's not illegal, I would go so far as to say, it's not illegal for, and I'll let legal counsel correct me if I'm wrong, but for a Alderman serving in a legislative function to do that.
I would agree, I thought.
I would add one thing. So that also applies to Aldermen contacting commissioners while a case is going on. So people in the public, of course, but also Aldermen, if you want to know more about it, it is, it would not be a proper response for any commissioner to speak with you about it outside a commission meeting. That would be improper.
And there's a whole different caution about Aldermen attending and testifying at commission meetings, but we won't go into that one.
Right.
All right, Alderman Deuter, was your question answered?
Thank you.
Okay. Going around this way, on this side. All right. Well, I want to thank Mr. Blue, Ms. Rose, for your time, your knowledge. We are, this is just general education, and we will be doing this from time to time, as we did on the Sober Home. We have some other ones coming up, so stay tuned for our exciting programs. If there's no other business, I think before the council, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Dunn, second by Alderman Veremis.
We'll do a roll call on this one.
Palomski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Hark absent, Honquist absent. Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. We are adjourned, thank you.